Do we have a understanding of who is joining tonight?
Chairman, members of the committee, in advance of this meeting, I've been made aware that school community members, Jeff Kootman and Mitch Artinarelli are on campus for the purposes of observing family members of the curriculum night and are prepared to come to the meeting if we have a forum issue. I don't think that's an issue, so they'll be doing their family duties. They wanted you to know they were here.
And did we know if Joe was coming or not?
We do not. Just imagine he's still here.
Joe is the chairman, since he's not damn vice, I will take over for the time being, try not to fill these shoes. First up, Secretary of Sports, Mr. Yutz.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the regular meeting minutes of October 17th. I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as written. So move.
Second, I have a motion. We have a second. What we'd like to do is call for any comments, concerns, issues. If there are any, and seeing none, I'll call for vote. If they say aye, opposed, abstained, so move. Thank you. Next item up, number three, Treasury Department, Barbara.
Yes, the Treasury Department was in the hold list this evening. The balance as of October 31st to 2018 is $8,711,233.79. There was $7,633,315 in local funds and project funds had $1,78,517.94. The reason the balance is higher at the end of the month than it was at the beginning is mainly due to the first quarter assessments, second quarter assessments, which we do when we're first. We used to report to the committee that everybody has paid their assessment at this point. Also note that grants are continuing to come in at a significant amount and student activities are ramping up as the school year begins and they start to raise money for some of the projects that are ongoing. Expenses for the month, there were two payroll warrants and two AP warrants and everything else is pretty much on budget and as expected.
I'd like to make one comment. I'd like to thank all 13 member towns for having their November 1st assessments in so that we can continue to do our business. And I want to thank the towns publicly for having those funds in. Now with that, I'll see if anybody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Julie.
Sorry.
We have a second from David. Okay. Are there any comments, any questions? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so move. Thank you. Thank you, Barbara. Item number four, student recognition, Dr. Michael Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Chairman, remember, clearly, I asked Assistant Superintendent.
You should join me, as we traditionally do, for the recognitions of students who have excelled in earnings distinction. This evening, we recognize students who have earned the Merit Scholarship Program. A little background on that, the National Merits Accommodation Scholars is an indication that these individuals have scored among the top 50,000 out of 1.5 million students who took the PSATs this fall. It is a direct result of their commitment to high-quality integrated academics and career technical education. On behalf of the Assistant Superintendent Principal, myself, the leadership team in the school committee, it is my honor to invite Nolan Ballard of Buckland to come forward, a member of the Construction Technology Team, Thomas Buckley of Hopefield, a participant in the Electronics and Engineering Technology Program, and Daniel Walker McDonald of Grafton, a student in the Information Technology. These are the individuals that we're honored to have as part of the Blackstone Volley Tech family and student body. Congratulations.
If you're doing the math, they're a top 3%. Top 3%.
I was going to ask you on that.
I have students that took the PSAT. We had some fun with this. We honored them with our pep rally. As I told you before, our pep rallies are a celebration of excellence, so maybe slash embarrass them a little bit, call them down in front of the whole school, and certainly acknowledge them for something very exceptional. So, nice job, guys. Congratulations. And I'm sure it's just an indicator of more to come. Very proud of you.
We also convey our appreciation to the family, who entrusted their education to Valley Tech. It will be delivered on the promise. I know there's the program or the agenda list for additional students, where they indicated in advance they could not be present. One of the major reasons is our soccer team is playing at the Central Mass Championship, and they're committed to that activity. These students are traditionally involved in multiple activities, and we'll invite them to come at a subsequent meeting. Congratulations again. Thank you.
Do you want to just mention those two students and why we were going to have them, or are we going to have them come later?
Well, they're coming at another, next meeting.
Okay, we'll keep it in suspense until more good stuff.
Okay, well, thank you. Move to 4.2, perfect score, 600, Project Lead the Way into the course exam. Those are students who are...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just...
No problem. Number five, sir.
Okay. Number five, comments by the student representative, Logan in Isabel.
Thank you, guys, for having us. A couple announcements for you. We just had our Fall Conference last Thursday. We had over 600 kids from all around the region, CDM, ASC, join us for the conference. It was a great hit. We've heard that it's one of the best conferences they've attended in a long time, which I'm really honored about. We also have a new date for the bonfire, which is November 26th. It's great because right before that, we have the Sooners Academy volleyball game, which is putting on for the class of 2022. So it'll be a nice little intro to the day into the bonfire.
This year, we will also be doing our annual Turkey Run, which is a little community event that we do, which puts together a Thanksgiving meal for 15 families in our community that need it. So we get donations from different businesses around the valley, and we put together little boxes for them. And yeah.
Any other questions for us?
Anybody have any questions whatsoever?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Appreciate it, Rob.
Academic Department Presentation, Ashley.
Chairman, members of the committee, glad to have Ashley here. This is our instructor of distinction, okay, recognized by the Blackstone Area Consortium of the 12 school divisions. And with help from Mr. Evans, welcome to make the presentation from the Visual Acts Department.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm really fortunate to work at BBT where the administration is open-minded and has the freedom to be really creative with my curriculum. So, I apologize to Mr. Evans and Mr. Steele because they've heard parts of this speech before. So I want you guys to think of a few things to start with. Maybe think of your cars, the shoes you're wearing, maybe your pocketbooks, the toys that your kids play with, or behaviors to play with. I think of my daughter, who had all these really beautifully designed toys, billboards, cereal boxes. All of these things were imagined and designed and created by artists. So art is a true vocation that students can really pursue. Before I became a visual arts instructor, I was a professional illustrator. My job was to convey my ideas and my clients' ideas through using my artistic skill. So as an educator, my goal is to help students to do the same, but with their ideas, using a choice-based curriculum. So I'm teaching them artistic skill and helping them to get passionate about something. Students learn painting, drawing, ceramics, illustration, sculpture, printmaking. They have the opportunity to choose between a 2D and a 3D track, which is a real chance for them to elevate what they're doing in shops. So whether they're building a table in construction or they're making an animation in multimedia, they're really able to develop a voice. With the adornment project specifically... Sorry, I used the mouse. All right. With the adornment project specifically, students were required to create something wearable using unconventional materials. The rest was totally up to them. To inspire the work, we looked at anything and everything, from cultural adornment, to avant-garde fashion, to performance art, to even gender roles in fashion. Students then created mop ups using repetitive forms and paper. And then they executed their ideas using whatever material they wanted to. So wallpaper, paint swatches, cups, recycled beads. At the very end, what we do as an assessment is we have what's called a trash-in show. So it's actually where students have to create introduction for themselves, pick some music. They usually work in groups. And I create a little runway in the classroom, and they present their project that way. These types of projects harness what our educators call studio habits. So these are habits and behaviors that can be carried out into other classes, such as persisting even when, you know, you're really not feeling it, trying new things, observing the world around you. All of these soft types of skills that are really important everywhere you go. When I meet my students for the first time every fall, it's difficult for them sometimes to realize that we're not going to be making pretty things right away. We're going to be making things that help them to learn process over product. When I began in 2013, these are some of the results. The program was a little different. It was a little smaller. I established some changes early on, like this project, and students were really, really drawn to those changes. I planned events, like visiting artist series. We did installations throughout the school with Mr. Broshu's permission and blessing. I also, we also entered into competitions, and we drew pictures the size of the wall. I started to help students build portfolios and apply to art schools. Today, I'm grateful to say that the program is bigger and especially with your support, we have the new facilities in the basement, so we're able to do more work like this and have more room to do it, which is really exciting. Students are going off to some really top-notch art schools in the country. And when they take art, they become daring, interesting, introspective people. So this project's just another example of stuff that we've been doing the whole time. You can catch a glimpse of kind of what else we do throughout the year by looking at these pictures. We try to keep it a studio-type environment. Students are always working hard, conceptually and physically with their techniques. They're always learning new things. It's challenging, but it's rewarding for them. So you guys are welcome to come visit anytime, or contact me. I'd love to see your pictures. We also have Instagram, Valley Tech Art. This is just some more examples of choice curriculum, so giving the students a great amount of choice. So, you know, letting them choose the technique, letting them choose the idea, not dictating everything along the way, has really been a positive thing for them. Do you guys have any questions? Thank you for your time, for listening. And I'm really grateful to have received the promising practice of work and pieces of nomination and recognition.
I think we have a question from Doc.
Yes.
Oh, me.
Hello.
They're hiding over there in the corner.
No, no, it's okay.
I'm an engineer.
Wonderful.
That half of my brain doesn't work so well.
It totally does, though.
So, I had visual thinking in engineering class, but just curious, what type of rubrics do you use to put a numerical grade on the types of work like this that the students do?
Yeah, that's a great question. We actually have national-based standards that have been set, and they're pretty much based on things like those studio habits. So are students putting forth effort? Are they trying new things? There's also certain, we can look for very specific things. So for instance, with this project, we're looking for teamwork. We're looking for structural stability, that it's actually wearable. We're also looking for some sense of cohesion, so that it actually either accentuates or does something to a part of the body. So when I'm doing this project specifically, I tell the kids it should really transform a part of the body somehow. So you can't just slap paper. It's really, it's a challenging project. Other projects, let's say they're designing playing cards, you get very specific about it. You say, okay, so like, there should be a border. It's up to you what the border is, but there's a border. How do you incorporate your idea with these limitations? But to answer your question, those kinds of things, but then also, there's actually national standards that have been set that I follow.
Just one more. Is there a digital component to this at all?
Not to my program. Multimedia communications actually is very much the digital side of art. Making animation, photography, graphics, and all that stuff. So I don't really go into that main. We definitely, we work together. So I do see their students during their shop weeks, they'll actually come during their prep periods, and I do, I get them off the computer. So that, let's say a student wants to go into animation, who needs to know how to storyboard, that's off the computer. Anytime you work for any sort of art director and any type of creative team, you have to be able to articulate your ideas on paper a lot of times before you even do them. So I am sort of ancillary and supplementing them, but I don't cover it up in the class. I mean, it's definitely in the wheelhouse, but that's their name.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have a question from Doc at all?
Not a question, it's an observation. Anyone who has an opportunity to walk by or even stroll within Ashley's class witnesses individuals in group activities where students are engaged, challenged, excited, and highly productive. It's a great, when you're not having the best day, or if you want to make your day better, it's a great place to visit.
Thanks. I do want to say that engineering and art are very, I know, I just, sorry, I just got to plug that theme, you know. That sort of thinking is really valuable with engineering. My husband's an engineer, so like, that's marriage.
Got it.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me.
All righty, number seven, Facility Subcommittee reports.
Dave's going to take over. I didn't make the union last night.
David?
Yes, we had a meeting last night, and I was in attendance. Obviously, Mr. Evans and Mr. Roger, and of course, Mr. Broshu. We discussed summer projects. Happy to announce or to report that we are 100% complete on the summer projects. The one last, I am from the last meeting, has since been completed, which is the track we have. Discussed snow removal preparation. I believe we're all set.
Hopefully, we won't need it.
Yes, we're all set. Master plan, which we, I, Jim Broshu, at the school produced back in 2014, was discussed. It's been five years, almost six years now. Looking at the possibility of updating that. Mr. Broshu's going to do some research as to the cost to do so, and bring that back in a future meeting.
Yep.
The roof project is moving along. There's an MSBA meeting on 21st that Jim and others will be attending. There are several grant projects that are in the works that are on track. The courtyard fencing, window glazing, the front security, and the gym floor, but they are all on track. Budget item that we discussed that was sent to Mr. Curtis for the Dean position. And last but not least, building tour. Mr. Broshu is doing so now in preparation for our open house. And that will be it for us. Any questions?
Could you just fill me in on the snow plow? We were talking about different snow plows and so forth years ago. What did we finally end up with, and how does that fit into this year's plans?
Well, I'll turn that over to Mr. Broshu in a second, but I can say, we just got rid of one of our old vehicles. I say one of our old vehicles, they're all old. I'm just looking at that, but...
We've got the Bronco, right?
We do. Now currently, due to the expensive cost of repairs, we put on public auction our 1999 Ford F-250 with plow.
20 years old.
20 years old. We received $3,145 for that vehicle on public auction, which was incredible.
That's with plow.
That's with the old plow they had. So that is gone. We currently are running a dump truck at a 2000-year dump truck, a 19, I think, 96 Bronco, 2003 Ford flatbed we have a standard on, and a, I think the year of the white truck is, I think, 2001 or 2002, the other white truck that we had. So we are still operating an old fleet. We're doing the best we can maintain them. I have put forward, I did the seed, I guess, with Curtis and the Facility Subcommittee, hopefully with the Budget Subcommittee, a new vehicle for reliability and affordability. Again, understanding that this snow removal vehicle's not just for snow removal, but it's also for vocational use, where they, we bring supplies to either job site, or we pick up donations that's given to us. A lot of times, vocational, we'll borrow a truck to go get it, or we'll deliver it. So we want to give dependability and reliability for, again, what we do here.
Plows that we have, I think we called them before, V-plows?
We call it, we have one five-way plow, and the other ones are just straight blade angled plows.
Five-way.
A five-way plow, you can make it a cone, you can make it a V, you can make it straight, right, angle left. So it's, that is crucial, especially when we do, we plow the courtyard, the rear courtyard, because we really funnel our snow.
Right, right.
Out of the courtyard onto the backfield. So it's, those five-way plows are priceless.
In the five-way, we have one?
We have one.
We have one?
It's on the dump truck.
And how old is that plow?
I believe it's approximately 10 years old.
10 years old.
Yep.
Thank you as well. Thank you. Anybody else have any other questions concerning anything that was discussed with the Facility Subcommittee report from Dave? Yes?
I really appreciate the walk-around of preparation of open house. It's been the comment and feedback with parents who visited, the condition of our building, the cleanliness of our building, and it's, the level of pride that the public takes and criticism they have, but they don't see everywhere, is something to protect, and it's a good thing to do. So it's good to stroll through, look for ways to remove things that don't, you know, like block an aisle or immediately. Storage is always a challenge, okay, and many of us don't like to throw anything away. So, but it is very beneficial to do those walkarounds, make a few notes, do the cosmetic kinds of things and other stuff. So I encourage the committee to work in cooperation with facilities to do that.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Thank you very much. Great Assistant Superintendent for Plans, Operations, Mr. Johnson.
Well, thanks. Mary Sahady from the audit firm is supposed to be here for 6:30. We aren't here yet, so we're going to go ahead and move forward to the excess and deficiency certification. And then when she gets here, we'll circle back to the audits and do the review with the treasurer and Assistant Superintendent Principal for the student activity piece. Okay? Is that fair?
That's fair.
So for item 8.3, it's the green sheet. This is what, as a result of our fiscal year 19 closing of the books, and we are required to submit a very detailed balance sheet and income statement for all of our funds. And at the end of the year, we certified in at $1.2 million for the 5% limit. And you'll notice that our actual excess and deficiency that was certified came in at $898,566. So that is much below the level that we are allowed by that 5% rule. I will say that a piece of that came strictly from Transportation, Chapter 71, which was about $230,000 more than we budgeted. I think we came in at 70% for the budget, and it was 77.4 for the actual reimbursement. So that gives a little perspective around that number. So we just wanted to provide that because it feeds into our next item, item 8.4. But I'll ask, does anybody have any questions on the excess and deficiency certification? Buck?
Yeah, for clarity and general understanding, we've also indicated when referring to excess and deficiency of E and D, that as we enter a collective bargaining season, that this is not the money that is used available for salaries or things of that nature.
Correct. And maybe a little more around that too. Yes, and as anybody will tell you, as they would say at the state level, their rainy day funds or their stabilization, that's to be used for one time uses, not ongoing operations. So that's always something to keep in mind. And also, when you're looking at this number, it looks at what you have remaining in appropriations that were budgeted. It also considers revenues that were collected in excess of what was budgeted. So from that perspective, when you think of being conservative, you always want to not, you know, low-ball your revenue, but you don't want to get caught in a situation where you have a deficit. So we do think very conservatively around our investment income, around transportation, which really comes off the governor's number, and our Chapter 70, which we do have a tendency, if Dr. Fitzpatrick has some level of knowledge on what they might be doing in terms of the final settlement, might be adding $5 per student to that number that comes in on the House one or the governor's number to boost it up, because we feel like it's going to move in that direction, but we're very cautious about that. Really, 98% of our revenues come from those two sources, so the remaining 2% is what we really have to be careful with, to make sure that we don't go into a revenue deficit.
One other observation, not for the public at large, that while we plan our budget with a reasonable expectation of projections of what we actually will experience, we also, as the school committee knows from the letters that we share with you, that we write to our five state reps and two senators lobbying for increases in categories such as regional transportation, known as Chapter 71. And true to that, we work with professional organizations, which we have membership. We wrote letters asking our legislature to continue to support a greater amount. Therefore, we're delighted to see the number be at least what we budgeted, if not higher, which allows us to make improvements without asking the tax rate is farther. So we fight to get more money than we built into budget, so we can have the benefit of that.
Yes, and then there's the plans of this too. For the transportation, we transferred, I believe, $25,000 into a revolving fund that is to be used to offset those costs for this year. So we'll be doing that transfer back in as a revenue source to the general fund. And then there's also what we look at for our summer projects, because we understand there's a lot of changes that happen, you know, in terms of classroom needs, space in some of the shops that we have to accommodate. So we use that money that's sitting on that page two of that, of the budget, that authorizes us during the budgetary process to transfer up to $500,000 of ANDD, if it is certified, to at least that amount, to fund those initiatives. We believe, or Dr. Fitzpatrick's philosophy is, we go for one bite at the apple with our towns. Therefore, we have to be very cautious with how we use our money throughout the year, planning for those ANDD funds, so that we don't have to go back to our towns. A good example is what we do with our roof projects, which we're currently selling and have for phases one, two, and three. Okay? So with that, we can move on to item 8.4, which is, you know, related to the excess and deficiency number that we just looked at. So the motion, if we can get that on the floor.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, please.
Would I need to read it in its entirety?
Please.
I, David Barton, approve to approve the transfer of $500,000 from the district-certified excess and deficiency fund, account number 1000-00-0302-0000, into the program Facility Expansion Capital Projects Fund, account number 6100-00-0498-0000, title for X or S, transfer from general fund, amount $500,000.
Okay. And then if you ever take a close look at that budget book, and it's the green page A1, and then that A1A2, I think, or A1A?
A1A.
That's where you'll see this exact language is presented. Forget, that's where you'll see this exact language is presented, that we petition our finance committees and town meetings for approval, and so, it's within that authorization that we're making this transfer request. We also provide down at the bottom, an analysis of the N D, so it's certified at the eight ninety-eight five sixty-six. We're looking for a vote of five hundred thousand dollars out of that, which will remain, leave a remainder of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Do keep in mind that we use a piece of this as part of our operating budget to offset member assessments annually, if it's there. This year, we did two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and we will be using a piece of that, almost four hundred thousand, for that same purpose. And it will be the, you know, the sub-budget Subcommittee's recommendation as to what amount will be used, and they'll be moving that forward to the full school committee as part of the budget process.
Doc?
Yeah, just one question. The four hundred thousand is the balance.
Correct.
A portion of which, not necess, we want someone to, who they're in a position to commit four hundred thousand for the FY twenty-one, we draw from that balance.
Well, Doc, that is correct, and we never want to bring that balance to zero, because if we had an emergency of some type that required use of that, we would have to go to our member towns and seek permission to use it. But, yeah, we would never want to be at a zero level, especially where most of our fund balances certified by N D.
All right, we have a motion that's been read by Mr. Lotlet. We have a second by Julie. I'm gonna ask, does anybody have any other comments and the questions that they would like to know in this suggested motion? If we haven't seen none, we'll then call for a vote. All those in favor, item eight dot four, if you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Anybody wish to abstain? Seeing, hearing none, motion is passed.
All right, as we enter the next motion, I will take a minute to say that the five hundred thousand that we just voted into our program facility expansion brings the availability right now with actual cash and encumbrances against that fund to eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars and change. Do keep in mind, we are still spending for math skills capital grants that we have matching requirements. That is some of the monies that have been noted in terms of your encumbrances, but certainly not all. And there are other capital projects that have been committed against this, but not in the form of a purchase order. So, I don't want you to think that, that we've got a hundred, eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars cash sitting to be spent on anything we choose, we just don't have every bit of that committed. That is something that's done between, you know, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Director, and Jim, and myself, depending on those capital needs that we've outlined, that's also associated with that master plan. So, with that, we'll go to item eight point five, and this is for the security window film installation. This was a grant that we got through E O P S S for eighty thousand dollars, and this was the security window film that goes, well, directly over the surfaces as you see, that would prevent a gun from, yes, it does penetrate the window, but it slows it down, and then there's a caulking system on the inside that keeps them from kicking the window in. And I'm sure you've probably seen the film, that it takes them probably, you know, eight to ten minutes to literally bust through that. At this point, Jim did a thorough walkthrough of the facilities, and counted two hundred and forty-three windows and doors that would require surfacing. We did put out a full request for quotes on that, and posted up in central registry, and on our local bulletin board, et cetera, and we received, at this point, three quotes. You're gonna see that there are some pretty drastic differences between those. On the high side, Millard Enterprises came in at forty-three thousand, one seventy-nine for American Window Film, thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five, and then Window Film Depot came in low at twenty-four thousand, two oh seven fifty. I had a lot of concerns about that. I, I called the gentleman back and asked if he, because it was getting some zero charges in there for the install, for the caulking system. But, what he had done is, because this was mass higher education consortium pricing, that was all-inclusive, at, I believe, it was about eleven dollars and four cents a square foot. So, he was very aware of the product, it's exactly what we specked out, it included labor, everything. So, given the fact that that was on a state contract, we weren't really even required to go out and actually do formal courtside, I thought it was important for us to see what the pricing structures were out there, and in the end, it came in on a state-like contract. We are seeking your permission to get this vote on the table. This work has to be done by December thirty-first, or we do not get access to grant funds. So, while you're voting this tonight, I still have some more legwork to do with the gentleman. I'm gonna be going through references. I literally just got his quote today, there was no time to do that, just because of the tight timelines. So, if there were some issues, and I had to pull back from that in the best interest of the school district, I certainly would. But, I do anticipate, whether in a lot of schools in Massachusetts, that that will not be an issue. So, with that, if we can...
The motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second? The motion, by Julie, seconded by John, this is item eight dot five, if anybody wants to make sure they see it, it's on the back of the motion. Julie, you've made the motion?
Yes.
And John, if you'd like to read it, so.
Sure. I, Julie Mitchell, make a motion to award the security window film installation project to Window Film Depot using mass higher education consortium contract pricing, the total price of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents.
Do you have a second on that? I think we did it, John, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. I was a little curious myself, there was quite a difference on that, but thank you for the explanation on that, and for the research to get us the best price.
You'll also notice there's a nine thousand dollar contribution by the district as it's matched on this particular piece of, or the installation, the contract service.
Curtis, I'm sorry, has Window Film Depot expressed that they will be able to get this done by December thirty-first?
First thing I ask them, and they actually have it in their quote, they said they have no problems, this is a tight timeline, but, yeah, they had no issues with getting the work completed.
Thank you.
We're contributing to ninety-nine hundred, uh, twenty-fourth, the grant, the district.
That's correct. And we actually had a higher cost in the grant for that, but we had some overages in a couple, in the security gate installation. So, it just ended up being whatever the district needed to contribute, we knew we were gonna have a chunk. We also, don't forget, this is coming straight out of our pocket, because this was not for infrastructure cost or construction cost. Everything that you see happening in that front lobby is all on the district, except for hardware for the doors and things like that. But, yes, all of the, the bulletproof glass and the build-out of that, that's all on the district's back as well.
Yes, Doc?
Even though there is a matching requirement, are we calling the total grant paying eighty thousand?
Yes.
Okay, just so you know, this is a portion of the eighty thousand plus the N D.
Okay, any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, call for vote on item eight dot five, all of you fit, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The extensions, seeing none, so move. Thank you, Curtis.
Okay, and the next item, eight point six, is a donation. I did find out, Mr. Steele, that the item that is on our campus is the test model, it's not the actual unit. So, apparently, Mr. Lewis, through his, I think Advisory Board, one of his members, was expressing interest in a floor scrubber to keep the investment, if you will, of the newly installed shop floor, to maintain that. And the gentleman is letting us try out a piece of equipment from Simplex, and, and if we like it, which apparently we do, he was going to buy that and make a donation to the district. You'll notice that there are no amounts on here. Number one, I, I think people would probably suggest that we shouldn't be putting amounts on here anyway, so we're gonna be getting away from that, because it really falls on the person who is giving us that to substantiate it. We don't wanna put ourselves in the position of assigning value. We never do if it's a company, because they should be removing that at its carrying cost anyway. But, I think this was around thirty-one hundred dollars.
Two, three, four, yes.
And, and for cash value. Anyway, we've got that for y'all to approve that donation. And if you do, they will make the purchase and then bring it into the school.
John? The motion, will I have a question?
Second.
Okay, great, question? Is this brand new?
Brandy Spanken, it's not even been purchased yet.
No? This, so, this is, so someone's...
Yes.
Tatasol, donate it, nice.
Yes.
Okay, I was just wondering, it didn't say new on it, so.
I will, I will say this, though, and we do have this conversation, things like this coming in, obviously, people see it, they want one, and we do have to maintain a lot of awareness around that. What happens when something, brand circles back? Are we gonna be replacing it? These things are, and I talked to Jimmy about it, I talked to Anthony, Doc, with what we've spent on these floors, seventy, eighty thousand dollars, it really is a good investment, but we still have to think about building that in eventually for maintenance, repairs, replacement, if that's the direction we're going, or either having a limited number of those in the school where it services a couple of shops, not just one, so that we don't have one in, in every area.
John? Warranty? Do we try to double it, because the school's not being using it during the summer?
I, you know what?
They push it, right?
We haven't, we haven't even purchased it, but, where we're not the purchaser...
Right, purchase still has.
We can certainly make a phone call.
Just ask, because it's not being used during the summer.
Yeah.
It's all right.
We can try.
Doc?
Even though you always have to watch those machinists, Mr. Tatasol has been a long-term supporter and friend of Elliot, and we appreciate his...
Absolutely.
Nice guy. Yes?
You getting something, we're getting something to me, but it's the, what the cost is for the product that you're gonna buy, you're gonna put in the machine, it's like buying a copia for twenty-three dollars, but it costs you a hundred dollars a month for ink, you follow those things?
Yes.
So, what is the story with the...
I can tell you, we got a scrubber with it, and they gave, they're buying us an additional scrubber, and we are getting an initial supply of product. Beyond that, Jimmy, I'll ask you.
It's self-contained, it's a battery-operated unit, they, they're testing it in the machine shop, it's working great, it's, it's small enough to get in between the equipment.
But, is it a proprietary product?
Can use F M I from them, is what I'm saying. I don't, that I don't know. I know it is on the state bid list, I know Simplex is on the state bid list.
I was gonna say, we regularly do business with Simplex.
Simplex is on the state bid, so it is on the state bid, but to answer your question, Joe, if it's proprietary, as far as the chemicals, that I don't know.
We will find out, though, and report out.
Good, fair question, fair question. Any other comments on this? This requires a vote, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Same? Eight dot six, so move.
All right, and then, Mary Sahady is here, I hope I said your name right. Sahady?
Sahady. Hi, I'm, I'm gonna tell you that my last name is really shed, nobody could've pronounced that either, so.
Um, make yourself comfortable, we'll hand them, hand them out.
Hey, I saw a beautiful one today. Get me on track. Good, keep some of them.
Everybody got what they need? You guys got what you need? Your lady, you may continue.
Certainly. So, thank you, everyone, for having me here this evening. As Curtis indicated, my name is Mary Sahady, I'm the principal of the firm of Peyton Sahady, and we have been engaged to do your annual audit. So, what you receive in front of you today is two documents, you have the annual financial statements, which are the statements that need to be filed with both the Department of Revenue, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, as well as the Federal Attorney House, as a result of you having a number of federal grants. I will have to say that what you receive on a regular basis from your accounting department is probably the best work, I've had this conversation with Curtis, the best work that we see in a lot of communities and a lot of school districts. With the exception of maybe a couple of year-end entries, your books and records that are maintained on a regular basis are done at an excellent level. So, you're not ever, you should never really think that what you get on a monthly basis is not top-notch, because it, it really is. The document that you have in front of me is your annual financial statements, it's broken down into three components, this is not something that's new in this particular fiscal year. The components are the government-wide financial statements, and those are the financial statements that the G A S B, which is the governmental accounting standpoint, together a number of years ago, we live in all communities and all corporate America basically have the same playing field when it relates to reporting both assets and liabilities. So, in that particular section of the financial statements, you're going to see things like your pension liability and other items like your other post-employment benefit liabilities. You'll also see your debt, your bond liabilities reflected in that section of the financial statements. Those financial statements are then followed by what's referred to as the governmental financial statements. The governmental financial statements are the financial statements that you are most familiar with, and those financial statements have existed in the area of governmental accounting and reporting for forty years. So, back when the standards really changed forty years ago, your governmental financial statements came into play, and so, you've been seeing statements such as your balance sheet, and your statement of revenue and expenses, and changes in fund balance for many, many years. So, those are the statements that follow your government-wide financial statements. And then, last, but certainly not least, because it's really in most of my entities, whether they be school districts or cities and towns, is what's referred to as the required supplementary information. And that particular section of the financial statements, in addition to having to reflect your liabilities for your pension and your O P E V, is where you see your budget in actual. So, to walk you a little bit through the financial statements, and to give you a little bit of knowledge, if you will, going forward, the first part of the financial statements, or the first part of the document that you see on page one, beyond the list of, of school committee individuals, is our report letter. And, and over the many, many years, you've probably heard the report letter referred to as a clean report letter. That is the same basic terminology that is still used, although they have changed the representation, if you will, of the report letter, and it's now referred to as whether it's a modified report letter or it's an unmodified report letter. So, I'm happy to report that yours is an unmodified report letter, which basically says that you have your findings, and you have reported based on all of the standards. So, there are instances where, where entities, so if you look at a particular entity and they don't report, we'll say their other post-employment benefits, you would have a modified report, and it would be except for the other post-employment benefits, or except for the capital assets. In your case, all of the appropriate requirements are reflected in these financial statements. So, we are happy to, to state that, in our opinion, your financial statements are fairly present. Following that section of the financial statements, is what's referred to as management discussion and analysis. And in this particular section of the financial statements, it's, it's referred to as the N D and N, and that is where the district has the opportunity to provide, in layman's terms, the results of the activities of the district. terms, the results of the activities of the district in a given year. Now, what has happened over many, many years with regard to the MDNA is it became a template, and the auditors would always help the communities out, and we pretty much write the template and just ask for a little bit, just a teeny bit of input, um, with regard to maybe the financial highlights or the budgetary highlights. The GASB, in its, um, wisdom, has determined that that's what's going on, right? The auditors are writing this MDNA, it's a template, everybody's MDNA looks the same. So there is a huge project going on with the GASB right now down in Stamford, Connecticut, to develop a new template, to develop a new mechanism for the communities to be much more involved in writing the MDNA. So from Curtis' point of view, I think he'd enjoy that, because I, I know Curtis now, and, and he likes to do this kind of stuff. I'm gonna have a lot of communities that aren't gonna like this at all, because they're gonna be like, oh, my God, the auditors always did this, we can't write this. It'll be, I'm sure, a work in progress, and I'm sure the GASB is gonna put out some pronouncements and some help in terms of implementation, but at the end of the day, this particular section of your financial statements, it really spans between pages four and pages fourteen are what's referred to management's mechanism, management's discussion, to, um, bring back into layman's terms what actually happened this year. It's broken down into a number of sections, the financial section, it requires us to reflect condensed financial statements, which is really more financial statements, your net position, as well as your statement of activity in a condensed form. Um, it has as, we put also in a condensed form your capital asset activity, as well as your debt service. The one section in this financial statement that, um, I will say the district does a great job on is the economic factors, um, and those items that affect the next year's budget. So, and when each of you have some time, um, a lot of this is information that you already know, but this is actually written by the district, and it's provided in this document. So the readers of these financial statements, whether it be your bondholders or whether it be the stake, other stakeholders, which are the federal and state governments, the local governments, um, will be able to really understand where the district is going, um, in the future year. Following your MDNA, um, is your government-wide financial statement. So that's the first set of financial statements that I just referred to. In your particular instance, we're really talking about one entity, so we're not combining entities here. Um, if you happen to be, um, a city or a town and you had component units, a lot of times you see in this particular section some combined activities, business-type activities. So if you're from a community that has a water department or a sewer department and their enterprise funds, in those financial statements, you would see columns for business-type activities. Here in the district, you only have one type of an activity, and that is your government, um, wide activity or your governmental activities. So reflected on page sixteen are the assets of the entity, and then on page seventeen are the liabilities. So to bring you into the details of these financial statements, um, your assets are gonna be pretty much your same assets that are reflected on the, um, government financial statements, with the exception of your capital assets and now, now, with the new disclosure requirements, your deferred outflows of resources. So really, this deferred outflows of resources and the deferred inflows of resources that you see on the next page are really the difference in the measurement dates of your liabilities for both pension and OPEB, other post-employment benefits. So if you flip your page, um, to page seventeen, what you're really seeing here in terms of the entity's, um, net position as well as its liabilities, is that your net pension liability is thirty-six million dollars. I mean, I'm sorry, your net OPEB liability is thirty-six million dollars. That is the amount of money in today's dollars that you have as a liability going forward for those individuals who will retire from this district and will be able to be presented with healthcare benefits, primarily healthcare benefits, into the future. Your net pension liability is seven-point-eight million dollars. So when you look at these particular financial statements, what you're really seeing is that you have, excluding your deferred inflows and your outflows, you have forty-three, forty-four million dollars worth of liabilities on the books. They're not due tomorrow, but are due at some point into the future. And so what that's doing to you is it's creating an unrestricted net liability. Now, with regard to the pension liability, the pension liability is something that is really developed as a result, obviously, of your teachers, for the most part, that are in place, and that you will be paying their liability or their pension expense as you go into the future. Now, what happens in most instances is you're on a pay-as-you-go method of, of paying your liability. So, um, the, the state tells you what your liability expense is in a given year or what your pay-as-you-go payments are gonna be, and you make those payments going forward. And so the liability is not such that it's a bad thing, if you will, in the sense that you haven't paid something that you owe, but it's a liability because of the nature of the fact that the benefit packages for your teachers and your other administrators is, is a, is a good benefit package, and that benefit package is gonna cost you money in the future, um, with regard to those liabilities. So probably not for discussion today, but for discussion somewhere into the future, and it certainly has been talked about, um, within a lot of communities, is to really look at what that benefit package is and whether, going forward, the district can afford that benefit pack, packaging. Not necessarily yourselves in the sense of just Blackstone Valley, but of course the Commonwealth and of course the United States. So if you picked up any set of financial statements, so I don't want you to look at this thirty-six million dollars and say, oh, my God, the liability is outrageous. Yes, it is, because that's the benefit package that is being negotiated in the union contracts over many, many years, over many, many districts and many, many cities and towns. So no matter what set of financial statements you pick up, you're gonna see a large, very large, um, other post-employment benefit. What is happening, not only across the Commonwealth, we do a lot of work in Rhode Island as well, um, but basically across the United States, but even in the New England states, is some of these communities are looking at those benefit packages and trying to determine whether the seventy-five, twenty-five is the proper split. I mean, I've got one community now that is actually going to fifty-fifty. What that does, of course, is reduce this liability. The other thing, uh, or the other way, now, you have a fiduciary fund and you have a trust set up, is to fund the trust with more monies on an annual basis out of your operating budget. By funding that trust, um, with some additional dollars out of your operating budget, what that does is it will, the actuarial will look at the amount that's in there, it'll look at what your liability is, it'll look at a lot of other items, right? The mentality of your, um, population, it'll look at the age of your population, and your liability will be able to be decreased. So you wanna kind of look at that going forward, um, something Curtis will certainly say to you about when he's putting together the budget, but if there's an opportunity to put additional funding into your OPEB trust, you will be able to eventually, um, reduce that liability, even without any changes in the benefit package. So, um, in terms of your government-wide financial statements, um, there's not a lot of change between your governmental statements and your government-wide, with the exception of bringing your assets on the books, and these liabilities. So these liabilities are really the, the big numbers that, that you're looking at.
You've done other towns, correct? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Where do we stand percentage-wise among the students or the type of area that we are? Do we stand with other towns with this type of liability?
So most of the li, most of the towns have pretty much the same liability. The only, close to the same liability. I mean, of course, that's comparing the number of population, right? Um, the difference is, is those, those entities that are able to fund that pension, that trust fund, in this case, the OPEB trust fund with more dollars, it's gonna bring that liability down. Um, and it's gonna bring it down for multiple reasons, but just the discount rate will bring that liability down. So if you have that opportunity, um, to fund it a little bit further, then certainly that will help.
Who's just one, I'm sorry for interrupting.
No, no worries at all. Um, that's what I'm here for, hopefully. Page eighteen, um, again, shows a lot of the same activity that you will see further into the document with regard to the government-wide financial statements versus the governmental. Here, all this particular page does is it takes all of your activity and based on the, the standards, the accounting standards and the reporting standards, breaks it down by function area. And then assigns, if you will, the revenue, um, as it relates to that particular function area. So if you were to look at, for an example, the instructional area, you have two types of revenue, in addition to your town assessment, your member-town assessment, two types of revenue that really offset those instructions, and that is, um, your charges for services and your operating grants. And your operating grants are primarily those grants that you see for instructional purposes, Title I, special education. Those types of grants are offsetting the cost, because in those grants, you're utilizing them primarily for, um, teacher salaries. Page nineteen and page twenty, uh, the, nineteen and twenty-one, really, uh, the financial statements that you have typically seen over the years, um, a little bit of explanation on these, these particular pages. The general fund, that's your general operating fund, that's the fund that, that you talk about on a regular basis, that's your budgetary fund. Those are gonna be the numbers that are reflected in column one. The standard requires you to, um, set aside any other major funds that may have been appropriate during a particular year. So the major funds can be calculated by a formula that the AICPA puts out with regard to what is a major fund by definition, or it can be selected by a community or a district because they wanna highlight a particular fund. So in this particular case, your, um, facilities expansion grant is being highlighted here as a major fund, but in this particular case, this fund is almost closed out, right? So your, your expansion fund is pretty much done, um, but we're still showing it here so that we can show it through its completion. By definition, it doesn't meet the definition of a major fund, um, any longer, but we're gonna continue to show it so that all the readers of your financial statements can see the completion of that, that, um, facilities expansion fund. And then all your other funds are combined, um, in a non-major governmental fund. So for the most part, what that means is, oh, my goodness, everything's combined to you. Revolving funds are here, federal funds are here, and so what your district has decided to do over the years is to show all of that information in the back section of the financial statements as supplementary information. So Curtis puts together the information that's required by the Department of Revenue when you have your E and D certified, and though that information is reflected in the back section of these financial statements for the readers that are interested in all the detail. From the governmental accounting standards point of view, it's only recorded in a combined fashion. So these are your governmental funds. You will see here that you have, um, in your general fund, um, a million five in total fund balance, six-hundred-and-thirty-two of that is assigned, and then nine-hundred-and-eight is available and is referred to as unassigned. Pages twenty and, and twenty-two are only here for informational purposes, so for anyone that is extremely interested in trying to reconcile back, so this is really for those geeks who wanna reconcile back with governmental funds to the government-wide, um, that's what twenty and twenty-two are really doing for you. It's really just a mechanism to prove back that there is a true link between your governmental funds and your government-wide funds. So it's really not a lot to talk about there. On page twenty-one, um, that is your revenue and your expenses as they relate to both your operating budget and, again, your facilities, so you can see that, you know, you're pretty much winding down there, you have a hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars left in expenditures there, and then you've got your non-major governmental, and again, it's the combined of all of your funds you're revolving, your state grants, your federal grants, et cetera. The one, um, item that I, I would bring to your attention that you may not see on a regular basis in your, um, general fund is your mass teacher retirement, let's refer to as on-behalf payment. So when the mass teacher's retirement makes a payment on behalf of the retire, of the pension, what happens is we're required by way of standard to record it as revenue, as if it came in, and as an expense, as if it went out, but it really never touches, um, the bank account, if you will, of, of the district. So in this particular case, in, in this year, it was one million eight-sixty-four, eight-thirty-two. Last but not least, of your government, of your governmental, um, financial statements are your fiduciary funds, and, and this is where your other post-employment, um, trust fund is being reflected. So you can see that particular fund has, um, a sum balance of two-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. This year, it, it had an employer contribution of one-ninety-eight, that's gonna be on the top of ninety-four, and then a small amount, fourteen thousand of employee contribution. So it did have an increase into the fund this year. The fund really was just established, if I'm right, Curtis.
Uh, it was last year.
Last year, just established. So it began the year with fifteen thousand dollars, and this year it has some activity in it. The other two types of fiduciary funds are your private-purpose trust funds, and that's where you can put some of your donation funds or other, or other trust funds that are established in your agency funds. Just a, a note on your agency funds is that particular area of the financial statements is where you reflect some of your student activity funds, and those funds, um, are being, um, changed, if you will, in terms of their accounting and their reporting. It's one of the GASBs that will be, um, effective, um, in future years. So you'll see some changes in where your stu, where and how, basically, your student activity funds get reflected going forward. Anyone can stop me at any time. So following that, from pages twenty-five, and I will not bore you to death, but from pages twenty-five-two, I don't even know, the notes have gotten completely out of control, I guess. Twenty-five, two, fifty-nine, I do notes to the financial statements. The notes to the financial statements are, again, another way for you, um, as the readers of the financial statements, to understand where some of the underlying numbers come from and what they need. So the first part of the financial statements, no matter what set of financial statements you pick up, you're gonna see what's referred to as the summary of significant accounting policies, and it's really the policies of the district, um, and policies that are, are acceptable under generally accepted accounting principles. Following that, we're required to, or you're required to, since these financial statements are really your statements, you're required to, um, show information about, um, compliance with budgetary, um, policies and procedures. You're required to show, um, disclosures on capital assets, on debt service. You'll see pages upon pages of pension disclosures, as well as the same for other post-employment benefits. And this is really just to assist the reader of the financial statements, whether it, again, be yourselves or whether it be for your other stakeholders, to really understand the complexity, if you will, of some of the disclosures that are required in a little bit more of a layman's terms. The last particular, um, note to the financial statements, which is the note that you see on page, um, on page fifty-nine, is the note that talks about subsequent requirements or pronouncements that are going to take place, and note, or number one, if you will, is going to be statement eighty-four, and that's what I was just speaking about in terms of the fiduciary activities, that you'll see changes going forward. So in this particular fiscal year, the district is going to start looking at those fiduciary activities, and the DESE, the Department of Revenue, everyone at this particular point is really trying to interpret what that new standard is going to be. Lots of seminars out there, lots of webinars out there, I'm sure Curtis is probably already participating in some of them. So we'll be looking at some changes going forward in all of the districts and cities and towns that have fiduciary activities. Other areas are leases, long-term leases. Back in the day, leases were always respected as capital leases and operating leases. Going forward, there'll be new standards on leases, if you lease a lot of equipment in for operating leases, so rental spaces, your lease disclosure will be significantly different going forward. In your case, you don't have a lot of leases, so it's not, it's not really going to be that important to you. The pages that are probably most important to most of my communities and districts when I present the financial statements is really the budget actual that is reflected on page sixty-one. And on page sixty-one, you will see that this particular year, you had a surplus of a million, oh thirty-four, six fifty-one. And of that million, oh thirty-four, six fifty-one, you have committed encumbrances going forward, four hundred thousand. So really, you have a net surplus, if you will, right, because you've got those encumbrances, right, contracts that you've signed and agreed to before the end of fiscal year that you hadn't received the goods and services for. So you have a net increase this particular year of six hundred and twenty thousand. The majority of it came in the area of instruction and then in fixed charges. And so that tends to make a bit of sense because in your fixed charges, you're going to have your employee benefits, and so if your instruction, which is often your payroll costs are down, then your fixed costs are going to be down as well. On the revenue side, your biggest increase, if you will, in terms of a favorable variance over what you budgeted was your transportation, your chapter seventy-one, McKinney, that type. Does anyone have any questions?
Doc?
Yes?
First of all, thank you for the attention to detail, the information that's been shared. As you share the OPEP obligation of thirty-six million, I trust that you would have noticed in the process that the school system and the school committee has identified three different sources to contribute to the OPEP obligation, and those three are moderate operational budget contributions from our communities, limited significantly by the total number of dollars they will accept to approve a budget, and so much of those, so many of those dollars being committed to education. The second being a bit unusual, that the state of Massachusetts sent us outdated billing for pensions, you would have noticed that, and several years passed before they became aware, and so they granted kind of an amnesty, at least for FY thirteen and FY fourteen, roughly a hundred eighty thousand each of those years, and the school committee committed that to OPEP contributions, again, as a non-tax-based contribution, so the impact was not felt by another community. Then the school committee negotiated what I think could be somewhat unusual, but you can confirm or indicate that's not true, a contribution by the employee, the professional employees, from their paychecks for OPEP. Each of those is a small contribution to thirty-six million, but we hope it continues to show good faith and the recognition that the district has on the need to ease the exposure of the OPEP obligation.
No, I completely agree with you. Actually, there is a note in the notes to the financial statement with regard to the monies that the amnesty that you're now putting into the OPEP. It's really a difficult call, right, because communities and districts have really been on the page ago for OPEP for years and years and years, and I don't remember what your split is right now, a lot of them are seventy-five, twenty-five, I say this, okay, seventy-five, twenty-five. That has been really what has encouraged, right, people to come work for communities and, and school districts over all these years, right? They don't get necessarily the pay that they would get in the private sector, but they're going to have these benefits, they're going to have health care for life, and that is really, and I've done this for forty years, so I came into this business forty years ago, and, you know, the, I wish, I really wish, I like this gentleman. So, so back in the day, right, people would go into government or take a governmental job because they had all these benefits, but now, you know, their salaries are up there in, in, in amounts as well, and they're still getting all these benefits, which is great. I mean, I'm not taking the benefits away from them, but what that, those benefits are doing is now costing the districts a significant amount of money. I worked for years when Scott Lang was the mayor of New Bedford, and Scott went to the State House and fought this whole pension liability and OPEP liability for years. I mean, he didn't end up winning, but the story, the essence of it is you're not going out of business, you know, the town of Upton is not going out of business. So the fact that the GASB is pushing to fund these liabilities is a little bit disheartening because, you're right, you're going to take away from education, you're going to take away from the classrooms, so you can fund a liability that theoretically, you're not going out of business, so the liability is going to, on a pay-as-you-go, be paid for at some point. Now, the question becomes, right, depending on what your population is in terms of age, you could potentially get to the point in time where it's completely top-heavy, right? But you have that particular point in time, what are you doing with regard to, what are your policies with regard to supplemental? And maybe what you do is you continue with your seventy-five, twenty-five, and these are just ideas that are being out there by a lot of communities. You stay with your seventy-five, twenty-five, but you don't include the spouses after the death of the employee, you know? There are ways, but there are ways to potentially reduce the liability without changing the seventy-five, twenty-five today. Because the other alternative, right, if you want to bring down that liability and you want to bring down that cost going forward, because health care is one of your biggest increasing costs on a regular basis, you can change that seventy-five, twenty-five to something other than seventy-five, twenty-five. So, you know, there's one, one community in the South Coast that is going to fifty-fifty. That's a significant change. Now, we still have communities out there that are ninety-ten, that, you know, have their affluent communities and they have the ability to, to be ninety-ten, but the majority of the communities and districts are seventy-five, twenty-five. But those are your options, and you're right, you want to keep your dollars as best as you can in the classroom, so in order to do that, you have to stop being a little bit creative with some of these liabilities with, you know, the future and, and you can, you can see the actuary does, does the work on, you know, the age group that you have, what that population is, you know, the mortality rate, they look at all of that, and those are some of your options that you can look at, but, yeah, it's a growing liability. And that's what turns your financial statements, you know, and those of us in that central accounting geek world, like, will say your financial statements are upside down, right, because if you look at your net position right now, your unrestricted fund balance, right, net position, is a negative forty-one million dollars, but that's because you've got this liability on the books. So if you didn't have this liability on the books, you would have a positive fund equity.
Just a question, Mary, if I may. You had a, one client, I guess, in South Shore that went to fifty-fifty. What was their previous number that they were at?
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
And they dropped to a fifty from seventy-five, or was it a gradual client?
Sixty, forty. They went to sixty, forty.
And they're fifty-four. So they were incremental bikes that were relatively in ten percent increments. Interesting.
Now, the other option, okay, so, for full disclosure, I do a lot of consulting work for the city of Fall River, I shouldn't hardly tell anybody that since we're always in the news, but the other option is, is a mechanism that Fall River just implemented this past year to what's referred to as carving out the prescription drugs. So when Fall River carved out the prescription drugs from their Blue Cross plan, they had almost a three million dollar savings now. What that meant is it became much more competitive, right? So Blue Cross is the one that's carrying Fall River's health insurance and was carrying their prescription drug program. And by carving out the drugs and making that more competitive, yes, the employees have to carry two cards now, but what it did was for Fall River, it saved them close to three million dollars in just prescription costs. So although Blue Cross has been, you know, steadily increasing, Fall River's total health care, and I know we're talking a much bigger, obviously, entity, but their total health care budget actually decreased last year. So that's an alternative as well. I don't, you know, in terms of, you know, internal policies and procedures, you know, it may be something to look at. I'm not a hundred percent sure who's counting the health insurance, I don't, I don't know, I don't remember for sure when I'm looking at it, but that's, that's an alternative. Is there some downfall to it? Yeah, it's something that really needs to be negotiated, what happens, you know, and I know this is not for today's meeting, but there's, there's mechanisms to, to, to go into a bidding process to carve out the drugs and then determine, based on your current population, what prescriptions are primarily being used, and negotiate the rates on those prescriptions. The other alternative, I don't know if you're using mail-ins, but a lot of times if you use mail-ins, you can save some, some money on, on the prescription renewals. So those are the kinds of things, because where else can you save your money? There is no place in your budget. Realistically, if you really think about it, you've got a few fixed costs that, there's your pension and your health care, those are your big numbers, right, and then you've got salaries for your teachers. So, you know, if you want to keep as much money as possible in the classroom, which is always your objective as a school committee, then looking at some other alternatives in terms of being able to be a little creative with some of your other expenses would be the way to go. But you have very capable hands in the back here that can certainly, Curtis can certainly do some of that if he has them already, I suspect he might have, but, you know, I can certainly give him some ideas, or we can bat some ideas against each other if he'd like, and that may help you with some savings in your operating budget so that you keep the primary, primary dollars in your classroom.
Okay, does anybody have any further questions, comments, anything else that Mary may be able to answer? That was quite, quite a review. Thank you very much. There was lots of information.
You have another document in front of you, this particular document, the school district, and I can just kind of go over this quickly for you. This is really more of an internal document, but we can certainly talk about it here. The school district asked us to come in and look at the student activity funds in particular. DESE set aside a policy a number of years ago and requires the school district to reach out on a regular basis to auditors and have them audit, if you will, the student activity funds. So what you have here is a document that goes over all of the particular procedures that the district has set aside, meaning DESE has set aside in terms of what the best practices should be, and in terms of findings and recommendations, what we presented in this particular document is the difference between what DESE has set aside in terms of guidelines and what is occurring here within the district. I will say, working with the district personnel and with the finance department, I think realistically, they are doing an excellent job. There are a couple of areas that potentially need to be tweaked, we've talked about them, the district has come back and responded to them. Most of them have to do with no formal procedures, and again, it's something that occurs across most districts now. One of the questions, I'm just flipping quickly so I don't spend a lot more of your time this evening, but one of the questions was that there needs to be a formal internal annual audit process. There's no formal internal audit process, the external, we did the one this year, but ideally, on every other year, the district could potentially do it in-house, and so you'd need to put together a policy. The same thing with some of the revenue deposits, if you will, and expenditures, it's a policy, written policy, formal policies that probably need to be looked at and, and put into place. In terms of program, student activities, any issues with them, we had absolutely no issues. There are a couple of instances where we brought to the district's attention some corrections that need to be made, but I, overall, they've done an excellent job managing the student activity funds, and believe me, that's, that's a project because you have a lot of student activities and have a lot of advisors involved, and so the process overall is really about, you know, taking care of the students, right, and these student activity funds, but overall, the district does a great job, so, I mean, this is just, it's more from DESE requirement and for the district to look at and say, okay, maybe we need to put together a couple of policies that we don't have formalized, but we're actually doing. So they're doing it, but you might want to formalize some of the policies. Other than that, I don't have anything else for you this evening, but if you ever have any questions, any of you, you can find all your questions through Curtis to myself, or if you want to reach out to me directly, I'm certainly available and will answer your emails.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody have any further questions? Thank you very much, Mary, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Down to the manai, Assistant Superintendent Director Anthony Steele.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. Starting off tonight, my employee, National Honor Society Convention Ceremony Report. We just held that last night, and we're going to, a few school committee members in the room serving as proud parents last night, I would point out. Two societies, actually, we have the National Honor Society and the National Technical Honor Society. Last night, we're happy to recognize our sixty-four current members, but also welcome in ninety-four new members who took their old sin, entered into one, the other, or both societies. Any questions on National Honor Society induction? Seeing none, move on to ninety-two tonight. Part of the noise you hear in the culinary arts here is part of the vocational career curriculum night activity, it's going on while we've been in this meeting. This is one of the open house nights that we host specifically for freshman parents. Freshmen have gone through or completed at this point six of their seven exploratory cycles. We have them rank their choices back into their, if you will, top, top six that they've experienced and the priority that they've put them in, and the parents will go through and visit the top four. It's an opportunity for the parents to understand better what the career technical program is about, everything from a curriculum that is studied, expected salary and wages, career opportunities, and any other open-ended questioning they have. And so essentially, there's a four-station rotation, if you will, where parents tonight have been circling throughout the building to see their sons and daughters' top four choices. It's an opportunity for not only the parents to ask questions and get clarification, but it's also an opportunity for the shop to sell itself, if you will, market itself for what they have to offer within the career pathway. what they have to offer within the career pathway to train in up for community. So we're relatively new at, I think it's a fourth year we've done it, but it's, we found that sons and daughters will go home and they'll say, you know, jeez, I really like shop X. Mom and dad might have a different idea. It's something that we did to make sure that they're able to communicate, collaborate, and have some meaningful discussion around it before ultimately choosing their final shop placement choices. Any question on both career and curriculum then?
Just one quick question. Do you find a lot of differences between what the youngster thinks that they're going to be interested in after they go through the cycle and they come back and it's switched a lot? Do they stay the same path sort of?
Well, we can look at, one, one data point to look at there is when the students apply, on their application, we ask them what their top choice is, just one, just what shop do you think you want to come here for? And then after the exploratory process, we compare that, and it's about seventy percent change there.
A lot there. Half, three, about half.
Very high. Which also tells us exploratory works because they have an opportunity to have greater understanding of what they envisioned something was like versus coming in and seeing the reality of that.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Moving on to nine point three, Abigail Adams Award Ceremony is coming up for us, I believe the twentieth is Tuesday, is that correct? Tuesday. Myself, Dr. Fitzpatrick.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, thank you. Just don't have a calendar.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
The Board of Education meeting is Tuesday.
Oh, Dr. Fitzpatrick will be here doing Abigail Adams.
That's Wednesday. You will be back.
All right.
Who knows, maybe you won't.
I'm going to stick with this. I'm not seeing a calendar in front of me on eleven twenty, two thousand nineteen. We're going to have that ceremony here, whatever day that is. And we, this year, we're happy to report we have eighty-one recipients this year. So these, again, Abigail Adams awards. I noticed Evans in his prior NCAS report told you a little bit about them. They're based on NCAS scores in our top twenty-five percent, and if there are any ties, the state favors the tie break, and so that's how we wind up with eighty-one. It's slightly more than twenty-five percent of the total number of students in the class, but they favor any tie situations. That is good for tuition, four years of tuition to a state school. It does not cover room and board or books or things like that, but it is still a significant award for anybody who chooses to make, make good on it and cash in on it. Any questions on the Abigail Adams Award Ceremony? Okay. And according to Mr. Brochu, it's not going to snow, but nonetheless, it provides you with nine point four. It should be in your package in yellow. It is the annual list that I provide you for the school cancellation, essentially where we advertise in media when we do have cancellations. We also will be looking at this year and it's bringing you a proposal next month of whether or not we will finish our analysis and decide whether it's a good idea to participate in a, what is, coin the lizard bag type opportunity. What that essentially means is alternative assignments that can be completed by full staff and students for a number of possible snow days. I don't know if any of you have heard of this at this point, but it's not new. In fact, I'm bringing it up now because we're probably the last of our sending communities to implement such a thing, and I think fair to say, I've had quite a bit of interest in inquiry from our parents and students of whether or not we intend to do that. That being said, I've not brought it to you to this point because frankly, I have not been satisfied that it has all of the accountability that I know that you would expect, who the doc and I would expect, to signify the ditch account as a contact date. Nonetheless, with the advent of technology and things like that, we have reached an era where students and parents, particularly when they come from another school district that already does it, or have siblings in other districts that do it, will at least ask the question of why, you know, we don't consider something like that. Typically, those types of days, for example, would be a maximum of three of those types of days, for example. It's something that the state has promoted statewide. However, they have also put some limitations on it, that those types of days cannot be used if it, if a district, I'll say it this way, if a district was just meeting their nine ninety-hour requirement or their hundred eighty-day requirement, you cannot use those types of days if it cuts into that. If you go beyond the minimum of a one eighty, nine ninety scenario, they basically look at that and say, that's a local school board decision. You have extra days, and in our case, we have thirteen extra days of contact days with students. They would leave it up to this board and this administrative team to ultimately determine if we have adequate alternate assignments. So we'll bring you a detailed proposal on that next month in December to see, you know, what you think of these ideas.
Unless it snows.
Well, am I not? Am I not? Oh, you're talking about the next meeting? Nah, not going to happen. And, you know, it's interesting, last year, I think we had, what, one day?
One day.
One day. So I will point out, though, that it snowed almost every weekend. We just didn't lose a lot of school over there, so. Farmers Almanack says, I think we're going to have a little different scenario this year. Questions on the nine point four, school cancellation? All right. Yes, sir.
I stepped out to answer a question, but did you and the treasurer have an opportunity to address eight point two that we took out of the conference because of the availability of the auditor, which was an opportunity for the treasurer and you to share further insight on changes implemented to address any concerns about the student activities?
Sure. Thank you for pointing that out. Obviously, we heard from the auditor, and Ms. Oger and I have been working on several of the answers, solutions to, remedies to the auditor's concerns. Do you want to speak to it?
Sure. So there were six areas that were mentioned as concerns where they thought that we could strengthen our procedures and controls, and they ranged from training to updating some of the existing procedures. And as you know, there's been a significant amount of turnover in some key employees. So training is appropriate at this point in time. We are working with a firm who we're hoping, prior to the end of this calendar year, will be able to come on site to do a half-day training. That way, we felt that he could get a significant number of advisors to attend the training, some of those that are, have regular programs or are usual class advisors in addition to some office personnel that are involved with the student activity processes within his office, and then also folks in the business office and the treasurer, the subcommittee treasurer. So years ago, some business office employees themselves and Mr. Rico, who has retired, had attended some trainings and we not got requirement, you know, based on some of the plans that we received, we're thinking it's appropriate to extend that even further. So the comments, as mentioned, they were set procedures for a year audits. There's a requirement to have a tri-annual audit by an external entity, so that happened as of December eighteen. So we have to do one for two thousand nineteen and for two thousand thirty, which we're in, in the group schedule at the end of two thousand twenty-one, another external audit. For training, I mentioned already, we have to do some updating of documentation requirements for turning over cash to the business office. They'd like to see the lists of who has provided the payments, turnover, and all that. Also, some improvement on approvals. They'd like to see addition to advisors approving expenditures, students. This is a student activity, so part of it is to make a learning experience for students, so they want to see more student involvement and participation in the decisions and how money is allocated. And they mentioned a student trial policy as something that we might want to provide. So those were the main areas, and, you know, as Mary said, they were focused mainly on improving procedures. Student activities were initially introduced in nineteen ninety-six through special legislation, so they are, it's a fairly new set of laws, and they continue to evolve over the last several years, and they will continue to evolve as, you know, you may recall some of the fraud that has been out there in the different school districts have created more stringent requirements and more changes to procedures in how it operates. So I would expect that that will continue to evolve, evolve. I thought that the report pointed out some good information that will only help us to improve our protections. And as Mary, somebody, had stated, we didn't have any findings, which is good, so there was kind of nothing significant that came out of the issues of the A plus, so we always hope. Any questions?
Yeah, if they want to, it makes sense for us to look at amending the job descriptions or the postings for stipends, make sure that it's not a surprise to anybody that they would expect that they would, you know, be in compliance with these recommendations.
Yes, and specifically, we'll signify some increased trainings, as Oger was talking about. For example, our first training, we could do it, it was a four-hour.
Yeah, we're looking at four.
Four-hour training, so it's not insignificant. And also, we can get a lot of protocol changes too, not just policy changes, but developing different tiers of procedures, if you will. For example, some clubs are quite simple, some take quite complicated trips. And you look at things like skills of the safe, for example, and some of the trips that they take, they can contingent kick a hockey, for example, is not a small task from the financial side. So, you know, whether you're a class advisor or something like the motorsports team, you have vastly different level of complexity there. We're trying to design some systems that are easier to follow. And some of the things that, as Oger's alluded to, it frankly reaches a level of complexity that training is almost an understatement for some folks. They really need to have quite a sophisticated understanding of financial practices just to run their club. And fair to say that even in my office, my assistant, I continue to be impressed that she's able to pick up where Mr. Rico left off, but he's getting even more complex, if you will, to maintain and manage student activity funds properly. It's essentially accountable. And so we will keep pace with it, as Oger pointed out, but it will change some things, certainly in job descriptions for starters, but people's experiences too.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number ten, Subcommittee Report from the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Finn. Tonight was the first budget subcommittee meeting. I will be chairing this year. Mr. Finn will be vice-chair this year. Thank you, Mr. Finn. I'd also like to take a moment to thank Mr. Lawton, who has served as the chair of the committee for numerous years.
That's why I have white hair.
You will be missed at the table. Tonight was our first meeting. We're in the schedule. There's a small amount of financial courtesy of Mrs. Oger. We will be meeting on Thursday nights. We do have a vacancy on committee. If anyone is interested, please let us know. And if you would like to attend, just to see how the process works.
Can I suggest to you that anybody that would like to be on it, this is really where the rubber meets the road. This is your budget. This is what everybody is talking about, it's how the dollars are spent. It is important that we have more than just two people on that committee. I would like to think that there's some people here who strongly consider it and be able to make a commitment to it so that you can learn how the budget works and be able to benefit from Curtis and Warner and all the other folks that we have that give us input to build a budget of which we all sit here and debate on a monthly basis. So please give it some strong consideration. Don't look down your shoes. Look straight up and let's make sure that someone comes up here and does so. I don't want any shoe lookers. We need some people, you can't have just two people.
We need waterworks.
You need, you need some more people on this committee. It's not fair to just leave it to two people. It makes it difficult to vote and everything else. So could you please, someone, consider it and come forward? That's, that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Jerry.
My pleasure. Thank you, Mary. Jim. So much for the shoe spring budget. All right. We're at, let's see, Superintendent's Board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, I bring your attention to item eleven A. It is a copy of legislation that is currently in four, the legislation of this, they chew up, okay? And this one addresses a certain formula to shape future assessments for pensions. We would welcome support of this for two reasons. One is it, it removes an unknown, another need for us to project. If we can receive a confirmed formula to calculate our pension obligation in state, then, then we can build it in, you know, into our planning. The other thing is this legislation references forgiveness or amnesty on page two of two, section three. You'll notice that it says reimbursement, currently the standard of state accounting board under the calendar is two thousand thirteen, which we, under the operation, has been forgiven, two thousand fourteen, we are under the question that's been forgiven, and two thousand fifteen, which we do not yet have a confirmation, that that has been forgiven, shall not be required. So that's a pretty, this is, each of those years is worth about a hundred eighty thousand for us, okay? And so as you heard me reference to the auditor, we've been using that money to redirect it to make the contribution of non-tax dollars, but state forgiveness dollars to our OEP obligation. So we will be lobbying with a number of individuals in any of the school systems that are impacted by the forgiveness, roughly eighty-two systems are in that pool, asking them to join us in that lobbying effort. Any questions on that? Just wanted to share that with you. And questions, I'll move on to the next item. Another lobbying activity is the Capital Skills Grant. We've given you reports that we have pursued an eight-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar grant from the state and a matching contribution of one dollar of our district dollars for every treaty that the state gives us. We've been writing letters of support, asking for that to be addressed, and answering any questions that surfaced. It is my understanding that the cross-representative governmental cabinet group that's looking at the funding met Tuesday morning on this, on the grants. We haven't heard any update about the vote deliberations, but we'll continue to monitor that. Any questions on that? None, we see none, moving on. The state, I think over several different meetings, we've mentioned that the state is revisiting the rules and regulations known as chapter seventy-four, which are the guidelines and standards for quality vocational technical programs. The Board of Education on Tuesday will undertake some modifications relative to those standards. So we will continue to, we're written, testify, we'll do anything else we need to do to protect the quality of vocational technical education and the standards that drive us. Any questions on that? None, moving on. Item eleven point two is another document that you have distributed this evening, but referenced in the agenda, and I've been encouraged by the negotiation subcommittee, but certainly by the full school committee, to provide, let's say, milestones or periodic reports of goals and performance. The state of Massachusetts has recently all The state of Massachusetts has recently altered the rubra, or the standards, that these goals were aligned. So this version didn't change the goals that were already agreed by, through a transparent process, but repositioned the goals to dovetail the new standard sequence of the state. So it allows us to be in sync with the state as it makes certain changes, but not on new goals that we've already identified. Take a moment, look at them up, look at those in your leisure, and we'll continue to provide periodic reports on this. Any questions on that? So none, moving on. Anthony gave you a report of how proud we are with the Abigails, and the commissioner provided a letter of eleven point three, which is shared with you. And, you know, it's truly remarkable to have eighty-one awardees in the program. Now, just a little bit of the math and the answer, if all eighty-one students were to attend or choose to attend University of Massachusetts, the state university, the tuition there is currently fifty, a little bit greater than fifteen thousand a year. So if all students were to maintain their eligibility for four years, the eighty-one students would earn four million eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars with the scholarship support from the state as a result of being named an Abigail winner. Now, that's clearly a high-water mark, that is the maximum exposure or support that the state would generate given to these eighty-one candidates at Valley Tech who have met this initial standard. It's a pretty significant one, and that's why Anthony referenced it, and I think that's why I was given a chance to bring it up a second time.
What do you think the percentage is every year of the students accepting it?
Total.
You know, I mean, is that a hard call?
Well, they, all the students and their families have indicated depreciation, it's a fallback position, but in some cases, students are in full scholarships to a different college/university, and they prefer to take advantage of that, okay? So you have some students who are not taking it because they have another option, okay? But it's a built-in insurance, okay? The other thing, there is though, an obligation that you use it the next calendar, the next season, the next semester.
Right.
You can't put this in your pocket and wait three years and then decide to use it. They expect it to, it disappears, or used to, if you didn't use it right after you Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Item eleven point four, one of the many organizations that we're affiliated with is the Mass Association of Regional Schools, that have been very helpful in lobbying for additional transportation money and other things. We're sponsoring a workshop with our health insurance broker, Borislaw, here on the date indicated in this brochure, on Thursday, December nineteenth, from eleven to one, with a working lunch provided by Borislaw. So it's a free workshop, free lunch. If anyone had any interest, we're certainly, you know, glad to have it, okay? This is, the invitations will be sent to the full membership of the Mass Association of Regional Schools, which includes superintendents, school committee members, and business managers, and possibly others, so. We'll see, I don't think we're supposed to. Any questions on that? Saying none, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Doc.
Isn't that all for?
Good. Good. I'm ready to be strawberry.
Yeah.
Sure, that's it.
Educational instructor business technology. Yeah, okay. Anybody in the committee have any new business that they'd like to discuss? Yes, Anthony, go for it.
While we were talking about facilities earlier, it got me thinking, in the past, we would regularly discuss efforts and even contract negotiations where we were saving money on our energy bills. We haven't done that in a long time, and I know we have the solar panels and we still have the furnace that uses two different sources of fuel. Possibly in one of the upcoming meetings, if we could get an updated summary of how's our savings doing these days? Are we actually saving anything with the solar panels, saving anything with a dual burner system? Are there any other things going on? In the past, that was significant expense that we had, and we used to periodically get an update as to what we were, what was going on. So possibly we can get an update on that in a future meeting.
Yeah, we're delighted to share that information. We recently had an inquiry made from an individual who was kind of a green, green schools person, if you will.
I'm looking more in terms of dollars saved.
Yes, no, but, but he's, well, I was interested in the unit saved.
Oh, we've done things in the past, you know, we've turned products into soap and sold it, and that seemed to be kind of an ongoing thing, and I don't recall us having anything, a report like that in at least a year or more.
We absolutely can do that, we're glad to do that. But I just want to mention that we had an inquiry of a similar nature for a different purpose from the outside, and we responded in detail. So we actually just did a report, not so much looking at, we're looking at the priorities that that individual had sought as a citizen. And in that, we also reported that we, we had entered into a partnership, rather than putting more solar units on the roof or on the property, which is limited acreage, but entered into a business arrangement with solar fields, you know, over fifteen different fields.
Couple of years ago, we did a.
We now have an elaborate grid of that, that where we draw upon that for discounted energy, rather than utilizing space on the campus per se. But we could do a larger report.
Yeah, that'd be good, like an annual savings, what are we up to, what's going on, that kind of thing?
Okay.
Okay. The snowplow proper's brought up tonight. It's been several years, we hear it every year. I think we should seriously look at getting a report from Mr. Johnson about what it's gonna cost to lease one for four or five years, because they're our programs, that's how much water and milk bring, was we leased them. You take, you know, if you're gonna spend seventy thousand dollars over five years, you can only pay twelve instead of the fifteen, whatever it is, it's more feasible. I think we should look at that. Our equipment is mostly at least twenty years old, even the way we can well-maintain it, something twenty years old is gonna start giving all the time. With snow removal, I don't think we can afford to chance it.
So are you suggesting that we look at purchasing companies sooner than later?
Yes. I mean, we heard this last year, and I think we heard it the year before. I think we have to fight the bullet and take a serious look at this and see if we can include it.
That's fair, fair request.
Doc, yeah, once again, I hear the recommendation loud and clear. We have discussions with Curtis in the business office, certainly with Anthony, as far as total impact of the budget book this year and next. Can you look at option one, option two, purchase or lease amnesty?
Absolutely.
And come back with a recommendation?
And I'd love to look forward to having a conversation with Chad, because when I checked on a rental of a lease with Plow and the unit that they did not lease or rent those, I looked.
You can get it through the state fitting process, they do it, and I think it's marvelous, the state set up right up there.
Okay, thank you. Good, look forward to seeing that, thank you. Any other new business?
Yeah, I'll join the budget committee.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Jeff.
You know, it was a good-looking sneaker today.
You might not want me, because the last time I was chairman of the budget committee, we had a three percent decrease.
Welcome all kinds of opinions. Thank you very much for that, appreciate it. We'll get information, Chad, as to when the next meeting will be.
Was there a box slower?
Okay, we're into any others? Nothing else, okay, let's go to items for the good of the committee.
Hold on, I got one.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Doc.
I'm sorry, you go. After the mail-in review, we received a notification, you know, relative to a resignation, which is mid-school year resignation, for the date indicated on the document. So the individual will retire on December sixth, okay? So that will create the need for the principal and others to shape a plan to provide the safety and education to students between now and the remainder of the year. So in typical fashion, we'll make the necessary adjustments and figure out what to do. That's your statement.
Any other questions on that one?
I hear none. How about items for the good of the committee? I've already got one thing that I wanted to mention was the, I'd just like to make mention publicly that the BMR machi band won the national title again for twenty nineteen. There was a big celebration up at the BMR school, and for folks that don't know, this is really what they do and do very well in terms of the national machi band, and we're quite proud of the kids, and what they did, a national title for a small school like that is something we're very proud of, so I'd like to just make notes of that as well. Any other comments?
How many kids from middle school?
I think, I think there's two now.
That's a lot.
The last one I checked was twelve. Okay, any other things? Okay, the next regularly scheduled school committee meeting will be December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and what we'd like to do is to go into executive session, and for us to go into that executive session, we will be, when we do come out of that executive session, it will only be to end the meeting, there will be no further items that will be committed to. How about to go into executive session, I'll have to ask a little call around the room, and if you would reply by saying yes, Doc.
Yeah, one adjustment to that. I believe according to the rules, the committee would come out of the executive session to take action on the status of the minutes of the executive session. But I would be recommending to the body, if it goes back outside of the executive session, that it not release the minute. So there is an action following the.
Following the meeting concerning the.
It's limited to that.
Okay, we would recommend that. Limited to that part. All right, with that, we'll go around, I would need a yay for everybody around the room, David?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes and yes. Okay, we have ended now in executive session, and we'll take a little recess and we'll come back to executive session. Thank you.